It is 5:30. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we have a amendment to the agenda. And we'll put that in right after we do city licenses. It'll be towards the first. What we're going to do is add that we're going to recognize some of our police officers and some of their accomplishments. So are we good? Okay. That we'll recognize them for their accomplishments here. And let me, let's get the, we'll be here just a second. Let's, let's go ahead and look at the agenda. There will be an executive session at the end for non-elected personnel. Probably will be for 20 minutes. And other than that, is there any other additions that we want to add?
I'd like to put on there to discuss the city manager search.
Okay. And we'll make that item Q. Is that good? Okay.
Q are. Q as opposed?
Are, yeah. Make it R. Good. Thanks, Lou. Thanks, Lou.
Could we move item D into Commissioner action from consent agenda?
Okay, sure. I kind of wondered that one. Item D. Okay. Other changes then? Okay. We're good with the agenda, so I'd entertain a motion then to approve the agenda as we've amended it. So moved?
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're ready. Lisa, come on out.
Lou? We're missing one. She's on a structure fire right now. Okay, just, I know you guys all know who I am, but so everybody else knows, I'm Captain Lisa Helkenberg with the Police Department. And I was asked to come up and introduce our new frontline supervisors. I'm not sure if everybody is aware that we recently went through a rank restructuring. So we went from lieutenants to sergeants. And last month, we had an extensive promotion process for, to fill three sergeant's positions. And the three, two of them that are here are new. So I'll start with Sergeant Goza. He's been with the Police Department since 2004. He had served previously as a K-9 officer for the department. He is currently a certified bike patrol officer. He's a field training officer, which that means he trains new officers when they graduate from KLETC, from the academy. And he's also a child passenger safety technician. So he inspects, installs, and trains parents on proper installation of child passenger restraints. So this is, sorry. This is a, I feel a little kind of haggard here. This is Sergeant Dustin Taylor. He has been with the department since 2013. He is the department's TASER instructor, which his responsibility is training, recertifying, and help policy development on the TASER. And then this is Sergeant Jason Ready, previously known as Lieutenant Jason Ready. He was not demoted, so let's get that clear. It was a rank restructure. He started out as an auxiliary officer with the department and decided in 2006 to become full-time when we had an opening. He was promoted to lieutenant in 2012. And obviously now he's a sergeant. He's responsible for the fleet maintenance. He's considered our fleet safety officer and has been a member of the STAR team, our tactical team, for many years. And the one that's not present, again, she's at a structure fire or she would be here. She has served with the department since 2004. She is also a field training officer and a child passenger safety tech. So I just want to take a moment to tell them thank you and congratulations. Oh, I'm sorry. And her name is Sergeant Christina Johnson.
Okay. That's always a good way to start out the meeting. So we appreciate doing that. And as usual, the police are out taking care of a safety need for us, so. Okay, so we're ready for the consent agenda. We removed item D from the, from the agenda. And I would then entertain a motion then to approve items A, B, C, E, F, G, H, I, and J.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second?
All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're good. All right, now we're into public hearings. By the way, just to digress here real quick, we do have a couple of openings. We have a park board opening. And you still have until Monday, January 30th, 2017, to apply. And actually, that's a good board, and we need to get some applicants for that. I think we have one, is that correct? Just one? Okay. And then there's another listing there for the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. That position is inside the city. That applications are due the 17th. We're also anticipating another opening.
It's January 30th as well.
Yeah, January 30th, 2017. And I think we'll probably have another opening on that board here pretty soon, too. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. All right, so those people that want to participate, see Kelly, fill out an application. And so that people understand what the process will be. Last time I was mayor, I wanted to take those applications to the existing boards, let them review them, come back with a recommendation. And then we, as a commission, then reserve the right to either accept the recommendation or do something else, so.
And those applications are online if they want to download them.
On the city website.
On the city website, yes.
Okay. Okay. So as we move on then, now we're ready for public hearings on item K. And we'll open the hearing number one. There's Don. First hearing will be for 223 West Main.
Yes. We'd like to adjourn the public hearing for another 90 days. There's, this building can be put on the market, and there is a potential, there's somebody interested in buying a building downtown. There's a potential that that could be sold. So we would like to adjourn for, for 90 days.
Okay. Questions from the commission? Nope. Is 90 days enough time, Don?
The owner's here. I don't know if he wants to speak about it or not.
I don't know what reasonable amount of time would be.
We can only.
We can start, we can, I mean, we can start at 90 days and extend it if we so need it. Okay? All right. So, and you're good with that as the owner? You're good with the 90 days?
Yeah, I'll start with just like you were saying.
We'll see what happens.
Take one step at a time.
I'll close the hearing then. There'll be no action required then. Okay.
Yes, you need to adjourn. You need to adjourn the hearing for 90 days.
Well, I need a motion then to adjourn the hearing for 90 days. I keep you straight.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Open the hearing then for 412 North 19th.
We have had a chance to look at the property and meet with the owner. The owner has, since our initial meeting, started to do repairs on the roof and some on the interior. But still, we, it is staff's recommendation that we condemn this as dangerous and unsafe. And have an opportunity to work with the owner and providing him 30 days to begin diligently pursue repairs or removal. But it's his intent to do repairs, and he's already started to do repairs. So we will continue to, to work with him to that intent. I don't know if he's here tonight or not.
I am.
Could you please come up to the microphone and state your name, please?
Yes, sir. My name's Patrick Burden. I'm the owner of the 412 North 19th. At this time, I've done considerable repairs on the roofs, and I'm almost completed with it. I should have it done within a week. I've replaced four windows, or three windows already, and intend to replace four more. I will have it up before spring.
Okay.
That's, that's it.
Okay. And then your recommendation then, Don, is to?
To condemn, to get in the structure, but continue to work with him as he works through repairs.
Questions from commissioners?
No. Other than, has he already given you a schedule, or is that going to come after tonight?
That'll come after tonight. Well, initially, when we, when we met, he had told me that he would start working on the roof, which he has done, and has done a good job of that. But still won't be able to pass the HQS inspection at this point.
Okay. I'm good. Good? Okay. Close the hearing. We'd need a motion then to extend for 90 days.
To condemn.
Ten. And provide the owner 30 days to do one just lean.
Our normal, our normal. Okay.
I've already started on the work before.
Well, we have, sir, we have a process that we go through, and this is the first step in it. And as long as you stay in contact with the city inspector, then we're, we've worked with others in the past and extended some timelines and stuff. We're happy to work with you. This is just part of the process.
With the ordinance, doesn't it allow him 30 days first to start? But then, once he gets a schedule, is it nine months?
Yes.
It is?
It's nine months.
Yes.
Can be extended to?
It's nine months. Yeah. That's a good point. Okay. So would there be a motion then to?
Do we need to close the public hearing here?
We need to close the public hearing. I thought we did.
We may have, I'm not sure.
So, out of practice for the ordinance. The, so we need a motion then to proceed with condemnation and?
To condemn the property as dangerous and unsafe.
Okay. So would there be a motion then to condemn the property as, deem it to be dangerous and unsafe?
So moved.
I'd second. Further discussion by anybody? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Next one is, open the hearing for 524 North Penn. Part number 114.
This is a apartment that had fire damage. The repairs to the interior have been completed and inspected and found to have passed the HQS inspection. So we would like to, staff recommends to rescind all condemnation action.
Okay. The owner here. Okay. Any comments or? Depends on what we do. Okay. All right. Close the hearing then. Would there be a motion then to rescind the condemnation, all condemnation activity that's been already approved?
A question, since there's two properties on the same resolution, would this motion just be relating to this? Then we have to approve the resolution after we consider the other?
I just created the resolution in anticipation of you doing this. If you don't condemn, or if you do not rescind both of them, I'll, we'll adjust the resolution and have the mayor sign it in on another time.
Right. But right now, we can, the motion should be just dealing with this property, not dealing with the resolution. We'll have to deal with the resolution. I make a motion that we rescind condemnation on 524 North Penn, unit number 114.
My second. Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next structure is 909 East Hill. Open the hearing for 909 East Hill.
There's a fire at this structure. And it is staff's, there's enough damage inside that we feel that it's dangerous and unsafe. So it's staff recommendation that we condemn this structure as dangerous and unsafe, as a matter of fact. The owner is here if they want to speak to it, but they have made, are making arrangements to have it taken down.
Oh, okay.
I'm Melissa Small, the owner of 909 East Hill. We've already got somebody contacted to have it taken down. We're waiting for Atmos to shut the gas off. Diligently waiting.
So you've got plans to take care of it then?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. So again, your recommendation would be?
To condemn it as dangerous and unsafe.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? All right, close the hearing. Would there be a motion then to condemn it, to condemn 909 East Hill as dangerous and unsafe?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Last property in this section is 1016 West Cottonwood. We've opened the hearing.
Yes, so this was a property where we had, was adjourned until tonight's meeting because the bank that owned the property thought that they had a buyer for the property. They did have a buyer for the property. The buyer has gone in and done repairs to the extent that it now patches, passes the HQS inspection. And so it is staff's recommendation that we rescind all condemnation action on this property.
Okay. Any questions by the commissioners? Okay. Close the hearing then. Would there be a motion then to go along with Don's recommendation?
I make a motion that we rescind condemnation on 1016 West Cottonwood.
My second.
Okay. No further discussion then. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next item.
Do we need to approve that resolution?
Do we?
I'm confused why those are on for public hearing because they've already been condemned, but they're just kind of locked in.
We set the public hearing for them. But the public hearing, like you heard on 524, it was adjourned. And now that the property's completed, it doesn't make sense to condemn it. So because we've already filed the documents with the county, seeing that we're setting the hearings, on the county records, it shows that these are going into condemnation. So that's why we have a resolution to rescind any action that's been taken on them.
Yeah, to answer your question, I think it'd be appropriate to adopt the resolution as he's prepared.
Then?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2017-003, rescinding condemnation on 524 North Penn, unit number 114, and 1016 West Cottonwood.
I'll second.
Okay. It moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Now we're ready for items for commission action. Need to go back and pick up item D. Let's consider renewing the Lions Club concession stand lease.
Well, I'm a member of the Lions Club, and I felt that as a member, I shouldn't vote on that lease.
Okay.
I move that we renew the Lions Club concession stand lease.
Be second. This is standard. We've been this for several years. Well, it's been moved then and second to renew the Lions Club concession stand lease. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we're ready for item L. And that is consider request from AWOL for additional funding. I think there's some folks here who's going to handle that. There's, yeah. And you're, Dr. Eastep, you're the one that filled out the form.
I'm Phil Eastep, and I just have a few remarks I'd like to say. I assume that you all received the background letter and have had a chance to review that. It's quite complete, and so as a result, I'll be very brief. There are two issues in regard to the animal shelter. First is the quality of care. The second is cost. As the shelter has been managed since 1980, the animals have been cared for by dedicated animal-loving volunteers. Pets have been returned to their saddened owners. Animals have been adopted. Emergencies have been met, and many unwanted animals have been prevented. The simple fact is, the city, if they do a cost study, as I have, will quickly and clearly discover that they cannot come close to providing this level of service without a major increase in expense. Cost-benefit analysis should lead the decision to increase the city's support of AWOL to keep the volunteers working, the donations flowing, and the public served. Our request is very simple and logical. If the shelter is a public service, like trash collection and the fire department, as we know it must be, because we have an animal control officer, we have city regulations, and we have tag requirements, then to charge the shelter for water and the shelter paying its utilities on a bill, utilities on a building owned by the city is a little bit like charging the police department for their station. The second request is a supplemental increase at your discretion until a formal budget analysis and request can be made. So I'll answer any questions that you might have. But we did provide a lot of background information to you.
Yeah. Questions?
It says that, they sent us a letter a year ago, but I don't know. I never saw that, that I remember. So I don't know what happened to that.
I didn't, I don't know what happened to that. I didn't receive it. Not sure where it went, in the city hall building.
Because we went over a year without any sort of a contract. And as the background letter said, you know, we've had the contract for a lot of years. And during all those years, we've had two increases in reimbursement, and the last one being in 2009. And with, it's obvious with all of the other increases that they've had, increases in water bills, increases in utilities, increases in expenses and everything else, the only reason, the only reason that all of these services have been able to be provided is if you start to calculate the value of all the volunteer hours and all of the donations, it would not have existed. If you take any time at all and go on, as everybody does, goes on the internet and find out what it costs to run a comparable-type shelter, it's, it's just incredible what it really actually costs. And so the amount that we're asking for is just to make a solvent long enough so that we can do a real benefit analysis and get down to some hard numbers, so you'll know. So this is more of a survival-type request.
Any questions?
What's your, the supplemental increase do you asking for this time? 100 or 500?
Well, we're asking for 500, but we're willing to take whatever the commission feels that they can adequately provide for us at this time.
I do want to ask a question about that. I know they're asking for 500 through June. I'm not sure if they're expecting that in the budget process that something would take effect immediately. But although the budget requests come to you in June, they don't have to take effect till January 1st. So I'd like to be clear on exactly how long they're expecting the $500. Because I think the request is for six months. Right.
Yeah. Well, we'd like the supplement until such time as that we can ask for a more permanent increase in whatever that becomes reasonable, once the costs can be discussed and we can show what, what really is needed to continue in a solvent fashion.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so that would be for the full 2017 year.
That's what it sounds like.
Yes.
Yeah, I would agree with them. Well, from my perspective, just to be candid with you, this is that we go through the budget process starting in June, and our budgets are very tight. And we have the library, the city commit, or city rec, commission, we got numerous entities that come and ask us for money every year. Sometimes they ask for more, sometimes they don't. So when we go through the budget, we build the budget based upon those requests. And so anything that we would grant this evening then would be something that we would have to either work in, ask Jen to work it in, or, you know, something else doesn't get done. And as I said, our budgets are very tight. One of the problems that we face as a commission this year is that the legislature has placed a mill levy lid, that we can't raise it. I don't remember exactly what the statute is, but it limits what we can do. And so, you know, I, I see that there's some things on here that I don't think would be breakous. I'm, I'm, be candid with you, I'm worried about precedents. I'm worried from the precedents that if we jump the budget process and we go and grant you something, somebody else could come and ask the same thing, you know, for another $500 for somebody else, from another entity coming and asking for $500 simply because we didn't follow our protocol.
Well, I under.
That's, that's not what you want to hear, I know.
Well, no. And I guess my answer is that if you have, as we had with the water situation or anything else, there are emergency-type situations. And so I would say that if a trash truck breaks down, you're going to have to do something. You're not going to let the trash truck sit there without new tire or whatever. And so what, and I did say, at your discretion, if you can arrive at some figure. But I feel like it is important that we address this issue almost at that level and recognize that had the city done something since 19, since 2009, which is the last time there was any increase, and then go back historically and say, in all those years, we've never asked, and we have continued to use volunteers and continue to use donations in an attempt to keep the costs down, but you finally get to the point where you can't, you can't function. I mean, tomorrow morning, those dogs and those animals are still going to have to be fed. And so this is why we're trying to be very, very conservative and everything, but at the same time, recognizing that we're in hopes that some sort of relief will allow us to continue along this path.
Is this something that Jen and, could you look through and explore what is possible? And then go with a representative of AWOL and kind of come up with a proposal to bring back to the commission at a later date? I know this is, we're on the spot trying to make a decision now without that look at it, but, you know, is it possible to review our, our budget and see where we are and then come back with a recommendation of what is possible?
We can absolutely do that, but I just need to know, we want to set the precedent of making budget changes after the budget's been approved. My concern is that once we do this, that there are other organizations that have not asked for more funding yet, that will be come and go, and we need this. And I have complete respect. I know AWOL does a lot. I do think perhaps we need to visit about maintenance. I don't have the 2016 numbers, but in 2015, we only spent $872 on maintenance, and we budget 5,000 every year. So I don't know if there's a lack of communication there. But, I mean, there's, there's some funds right there that it looks like we are not using to our best potential for them. And I don't know if that's because you have volunteers doing it, if the expenses don't get submitted. So we absolutely need to figure that out. Because I know last year, we had some expenses, but I don't think it was $5,000. So if part of their request is maintenance, maybe we already have the budget in place for that, and the communication's not there. So we do need to visit.
Yeah, I think where the letter has been sent, they have requested, and, you know, if we're going to fund organizations, we need to invite them to come and present their needs, just like we have our departments. We can't at least send them a letter and say, do you want to meet with the commission? But, you know, to go that long without coming, you know, we need to make some contact.
Well, I think.
Well, I think the important, one of the important things is to recognize the difference between organizations. You can have an organization that wants to do something, and then You can have an organization that wants to do something, and then you've got an organization that is actually doing a city function. I mean, you're going to have an animal control program, so this is not in the same, and nobody likes books and libraries more than I, I mean, you can come visit my library, but this isn't a library, I mean, you can function tomorrow morning if the library doesn't open, but when the animal control officer comes in with three dogs tomorrow morning, something's got to happen. This is not a optional-type thing, this needs to be done, one way or the other, and if we didn't utilize our repair budget from last year, now that I'm aware that there is one, you can be pretty assured we're going to use it going forward, because I didn't really enjoy too much time with the postal diggers and putting the sign back up and all, so we will use it. So if there is that budget, we would like to help us get through the year with that, and I would certainly be only too willing to work with the commission and the staff to arrive at something. And again, once you have some numbers, make your own discretionary pick, but again, we're paying the water bill and the utility bill on a city-owned property.
Is there precedence, I mean, there's others that-
The, the commission does not pay water and sewer on their buildings.
So that would be something we could do-
Those are technically city buildings, however the housing authority does, and I really don't want the housing authority asking us not to, but, I mean, I, I understand the case that they're making.
Well, so do I, I mean, I understand, fully understand.
The water bill is between five and eight hundred dollars a year, of course, depending on usage and activity they have, but I mean, that's, that's a number that, that would be helpful.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
You bet.
So, what's your pleasure, man? I think we have a couple options here.
I think we've got to know where we are, and like you mentioned with that maintenance money, if that is there, that could be an assistance for now, so we can get to budget and have a formal presentation and look at two thousand eighteen to see what we can do at that time, but I think we need to know where we are before we can make a decision, and that can't be done tonight, so I'd like to see staff research and come back with a recommendation.
Yeah, I agree, I'd like to, I mean, if we're going to be asked to break our own rules and start giving them more money now, I'd like to see their budget and, you know, see what's causing the need for this. I mean, I appreciate the letter they sent, but this is way outside our norm to be asking for an increase in funding right now.
Having done budgets for many, 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 many years, I know the issue that she faces, and I'm willing to look at it, but, you know, I'm not sure we're going to be able to do very much, when we go through the whole budget process, we might be able to come up with some sort of a manageable-
He made the point very well that it's a city service that we have to have, and we have to fund it, but I just don't know to what level we need to fund it, I, I mean, I'm a huge supporter of AWOL, but I just don't know.
I don't think it's a question of whether or not we've supported or not, just to what level, we come up with money, because we got, we got to prioritize, because budgets are tight. All right, so Jen, you'll get with, I imagine Karen, and-
Is that, is Karen who I need to talk to, or Mr. Eastep, who do I, will somebody contact me, or do I need to contact somebody?
Karen would be granted.
Okay.
She can help, for example, and go forward to the issue.
Okay. All right. Next item is item N, M, which is consider following previously condemned structures. Don?
Yes, on this property, we, staff recommendation to take no action at this time. We have been able to meet with the owner and set a timeline for this, we weren't able to originally, but we have been subsequent to this being placed on the agenda.
Okay.
So it's our recommendation, take no action.
Okay. Would there be questions?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. Would there be a motion then that we not take any action at this time on three oh nine Cypress?
You don't take no action.
Just take no action, okay. All right, next address is three hundred South Fourteenth.
Yes, this has been on the condemnation list for quite a while, we've had several appointments scheduled, we've been able to keep a couple, but we've had a couple that have been missed, the most recent appointment has been missed, and cannot see any evidence of any additional work being done to the structure, it's staff recommendation that we author, that we, that you authorize staff to set a date to receive bids for removal. But I do believe that there is a representative for this property here.
Okay, is there? Okay.
Yes, hello, my name is Jason Wickline, I guess I'm the owner of the South Fourteenth House. Don mentioned that we missed meeting, like to say that my mother-in-law had a stroke, and family problems occur, she spent three weeks in the hospital down in Tulsa, and almost died, lucky to have her alive still, she's living at our house, doing therapy and stuff, it has been, it has been hard to, to work on the house, I have bought some materials to, to jack up the floor in the living room, because that is, that is one issue that we talked to Don about, and he said he would like to see done. As far as work being done on the house, previously, I've spent over fifty hours, I would say, cutting down trees, cleaning up the grass, I bought twenty-five gallons of paint that we've put on the house, we had a paint party with my, my little cousins, and, yeah, everybody went to town with brushes and sprays, and we had a fun time, but, yeah, I came, I came from work, I am working every day, trying to provide for my family, and this is a project that I, that I like to work on, but I had to provide for my family first of all and foremost, I mean, I've got, I've got two daughters, a five-year-old and a two-year-old that, that love to eat, so, yeah, hey, we're all really good at it. But some communication was, was misinterpreted, I think, I talked to on the phone, I thought the meeting was the twenty-ninth at eight o'clock, and I stuck around till nine o'clock, I, I might have been mistaken as far as the date, it was, it was, I got the phone call before Christmas, and I thought that, I thought that, I thought the date was the twenty-ninth, and maybe, maybe I was wrong and I was mistaken, maybe I had the wrong time, I talked to Don on the phone the other day, and I thought, I thought I had the right day, but maybe, maybe I got it wrong, I don't know. I apologize for missing the meeting, I, I don't, I don't intend to waste anybody's time or anything like that, I was trying to do my best as far as that goes, I don't want to see the house get torn down, the, we have, we have been working on it, as far as the inside goes, I mean, we've, we have, it was, it was pretty, in pretty bad shape, we cleaned it up a lot, and it is, it is a work in progress, and it takes, it takes time, and, yeah.
Don, when did we first start talking about this one?
Yeah, it was before I, it was before I came here, I think it's been March or April of two thousand fifteen, somewhere around there.
Almost two years.
Yes. I, I mean, I am empathetic, try to be understanding, but we have to look at the progress that we're being, that we're making, we do have a timeline of nine months, I don't think there's any way that we can make that timeline, I mean, there have been several appointments that are missed, I think it's time for, that we, you know, that we move forward to receive bids for removal.
I have a say, I'm sorry, city staff asked me today to do some historical research on this, and I was unable to get that done, so it's my apologies for that, I will tell you, tell you, Jason, I believe this, it had previously, I don't know the date that it was condemned, but it had previously gone to the point of receiving bids for removal, it was going to be removed, and you all came to the commission and asked for them to rescind those bids, so the commission at that time gave them an extension of timeline, so it has gone through the process before to the point of removal, you received bids, they requested additional time, you granted that, so that's where you're at.
Same owners.
The additional time was granted in December of two thousand fifteen.
Okay, so we, I mean, this commission then has already granted a year, a year, basically. Okay. What do you think, man?
I know it's, it looks different than when we started, you've taken off a porch, as I remember, and-
Cleaned up a lot of brush.
Yeah, cleaned up the yard.
Definitely work has been done to the house, we, yeah, we're trying, it's just-
I mean, I think part of the consideration is, we do have a timeframe that we have to work in, that we're asking everybody to work within, within that timeframe.
Right.
I mean, put more money into it, and, and we get here from a year from now, and we're still at the same point, his money, his time, I, I think we've probably reached the point where, I think we've probably extended as much time as we can extend on this, and to be fair, to everybody else that goes through the process as well.
Well, he took the part off that was collapsing, so the, the building is secure, it's not leaning, the roof's not falling in, there has been some paint, I believe, put on part of it, on the outside, you know, it's, it's obvious that money can't be borrowed against it, that he's only, can work out of pocket, you know, I, I'd like, you know, to see you make a stronger commitment on a schedule, but, you know, I, I know we've got deadlines, but, and, and that, but yet, we got to understand people's financial situation too, and the building is secure, it's not near collapse, it might not pass your inspection, but no one's living in it now, so, you know, but I think the schedule needs to be serious, and you need to work out the communication problem that when, that, you know, you confirm with Don and call the day before and double-check that, you know, you both can get on the same page and get the same going forward continually, you know, I, I would be willing to let him continue working since it is in better shape than it was in two thousand fifteen, and-
I would say that we, we have been clear on the dates and times that have been set.
My concern is that, you know, I'm an old house nut, I love to say old houses, but just doing it in occasional evening, when you're after work, you work all day, you come home, it's dark in the winter, so you can hardly work at night because it's already dark, I don't see how you're going to get this done by yourself in a reasonable amount of time, I really don't, I don't, I don't think you can do it in a year and have it ready for somebody to move in. Do you disagree?
Yes, yeah, I do, I mean, I, as far as, as far as moving ready, I mean, I, I think the checklist, I mean, every single window, the work, and I think it's a, it's an extensive checklist, and there's a lot of things that, I'm not going to say aren't really necessary, but there is checklist, and, and they all have to keep up.
It's the same checklist for everybody.
And I understand that, I understand that fully, and, and I do feel like we can, we can get the work done on it, it's, it's a fam, it's a family matter, we've got, we've got the family that we can bring, bring in, and, and I will agree that, that the ball's dropped a little bit on my end as far as, as far as with the meetings and stuff, and I apologize for that, no mean to, what do you say, like I said, I, I apologize, if you allow it, I will definitely do, do better on my end.
Okay. Well, we have three options, we can rescind the condemnation, we can authorize staff to receive bids, we can table for a specific, table for a review for a specific time period, or take no action, so what would be the commission's plan?
Give him ninety days.
Here's, here's what I'd say, I'll throw something out, we'll give you thirty days to come up with a plan, then we'll review it in sixty, and if it's not done in sixty, then you understand that we'll proceed with removal.
I understand fully, yep.
I mean, is that-
I'm willing to work to that plan.
I mean, it's an aggressive plan, but I agree with what Gary said, this, this could go on forever, it's already gone on forever.
There's several concerns that I have, one is the structure itself, and the interior condition and the exterior condition, two is being able to meet the timeline, and three, if he can't meet the timeline, it's his time and money and effort that has gone towards the structure.
He can, and I agree with that, he can make that decision.
Yeah.
He's big for, so, I mean, I, I mean, you guys can amend that if you want to, I mean, that's just a suggestion.
Don?
I said, what I suggest is just a suggestion, I, I just think we got to know if there's going to be a commitment there, and if there's not going to be a commitment, then we can package this with others, and, because I, to be candid, sir, there hasn't been a commitment, and so, I mean, and I think you would agree with that.
I, I agree, I do.
I mean, I don't think you could argue that for him.
I don't.
I'm okay with that.
All right.
Yeah, I'd like to see some serious progress soon.
I mean, quick, and I, and I'm talking about, I think, thirty days to make sure we get a plan, and then sixty days, we got to see significant progress on that plan, and it's got to be significant progress on the house.
Sure.
And, Don, that, not, that makes it somewhat ambiguous for you, but we can-
I think we can reach an agreement as to, to what an aggressive plan of repair would be on that.
So then that basically is going in a reasonable thirty and sixty is the, for your ninety day, so that's somewhat of a compromise. Okay, then I'd make a motion then that we table for review, that in thirty days, you get a plan to Don for what your schedule's going to be, complete all the way through to where it's, can keep, pass an HQS inspection, and that we see significant progress in sixty days, if not, then we will proceed with demolition, removal.
Can I just confirm that when you say see progress in sixty days, that's at sixty days, not at ninety days, sixty days after the thirty days?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, sixty days.
I just want to make sure I have it recorded right in the minutes, just so we can come back to it.
Ninety total.
So ninety total, so sixty more days after the thirty, is what you're, okay.
Whether it be a little nicer, you might be able to make some significant progress.
Was that a motion?
Yeah, that was a motion.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor then, any further discussion, guys? All those in favor then, sign five by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, there you go. All right, balls in your court.
Balls in your court.
All right. Next, let's see, that was three hundred South Fourteenth, right? So we're ready now for twelve oh one West Main.
Yes, so this was a structure that got damaged by a fire to a structure that was adjacent to it, immediately west of it caught fire, this structure received fire damage because of that fire, at this point, it's not habitable, it's got a considerable amount of fire damage to it, it is the staff's recommendation that we set a date for a public hearing to consider the condemnation of this structure as dangerous and unsafe.
Okay, so this is the owner.
This is the owner.
My name's Kimberaza, and like you said, our house caught fire because somebody had set the house next door to it on fire, we were wanting to rebuild that, the house was built in like eighteen ninety or something, and still had some of the original woodworking on it and stuff, but we had Don come out and inspect it, and it's just going to cost too much, the, we have to start from the foundation and up, and we just can't afford it, so, but we're going to go ahead, we were told we were able to tear it down ourselves. My husband works for a company that we actually have the, has the equipment, TriStar Utilities here in town, and his bosses are willing to come out and help, and I've got in touch with Kane, I can't remember the name of it, but it's for the dumpsters, yeah, for the dumpster removal, we gave them the size, you know, the, they asked for measurements and stuff, so we know about how much that's going to cost and everything, the only thing we've been waiting on is, because it's been winter, we don't want, I know we have to come up and get a- The only thing we've been waiting on is, because it's been winter, we don't want, I know we have to come up and get a demolition permit, and from that day, we have 30 days from that day to tear the house and clear it. I'm worried that we're going to get the permit, and we're going to get some bad weather or something, and not be able to meet that, and then we lose this. I have this check also from the interns' company for your 15 percent that... Because if we tear it down and clear it all out, we get all that back, right? Okay. So, that's the only thing that's holding us up, is I'm worried about the weather. But we do have every intention of tearing it down, and I don't know what we're going to do with the property at this point, but...
I'm so sorry about your home.
Yeah, that's...
Well, we had actually bought, my husband had bought another house that was actually being condemned, 1201 West Myrtle, so it's like a block away. And he fixed that up and got it up to code and stuff within, like, a few months. And we've been living in that, so...
Fantastic. That worked well.
This one's just too expensive, is that...
Well, the fire, especially on that west side of it, got inside there and then up into the eaves and down through the walls, and unfortunately, once you start tearing all that stuff down and trying to replace, and all the smoke damage and everything inside, it adds up pretty quickly.
Yeah, and my husband's the only one working. I mean, he makes okay good money, but, you know, we've got two teenagers and eight-year-olds, yeah.
Good luck feeding them.
The 30 days, Dawn, is not engraved in stone. Isn't that within reason that if there's weather delays or something, so...
As long as we're seeing progress and then moving towards doing that. And I don't have any problem waiting, you know, another month or two for the weather to be a little bit better, for them to get the equipment in and out of there. I don't have any issue with that. With this, I think now, you know, there's an incentive for them to keep a timeline to get that down. So, I don't have any problem waiting until they're ready to do this.
Yeah, and since we're just considering to set a date, then they've really got until March 23rd, too.
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah, you don't have to condemn it at the hearing.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, we, it's just a part of the process.
Yeah, I understand that, so...
So, that doesn't, I mean...
If we go ahead and place it on condemnation, is there a fee then charged to them for the advertisement and everything?
There's the publication notices that would be assessed back to the property. I mean, the further you go in, the more they add up, but the minute you adopt this resolution tonight, it will be published in the paper, and then those fees are assessed back to the property, or invoiced, they're invoiced first. If they pay them, then we're good. If not, we assess it back to the property, should go back to this.
But basically, then, if she gave you a check, she's stating she's applying for a demolition permit at this point.
And in the condemnation process, once the fire insurance proceeds are deposited, we would take those expenses out of the check. So, what's refunded to them if it's $60 to publish the resolution setting the hearing? $60 would come out of the check, and they'd have the remainder.
We need to proceed, though, because there are fire insurance, and part of the statutory requirements in receiving those is to follow through with this process.
So... Thank you, and good luck. Yeah. So, I mean, like, what's suggested, we need to follow through with the process here, so...
Yeah.
I would make a motion that we set the date to March 23rd, 2017, at 5:30 for a public hearing to consider condemnation of 1201 West Main.
I'll second.
Okay, all those, further discussion? Then, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, 1009 North 17th Place.
Yes. So, this had a significant fire to the structure, and as you can see, part of the roof has gone in, quite a bit of smoke and fire damage. See what's burned through there. So, it is the staff's recommendation that we set a date for a public hearing to consider condemnation of this structure as dangerous and unsafe.
Is that total?
Yes.
Is it total?
Yes.
All right, comments?
Owner here.
Yes.
Okay. Yay! Okay. All right, so then, would there be a motion to set the date to March 23rd for the condemnation?
I'll move that we set the date to March 23rd, 2017, at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of 1009 North 17th Place.
Okay, second. Second? All those... Second. Leonard, second. All those in favor, then, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, item O. Consider quotes for, received for the downtown street repair work. Sean?
Hello. So, we received two quotes for the downtown street repair related to the water main break. At the time of the, we requested the quotes, we thought we could save at least a portion of the sidewalk, of the crosswalk in that area, but it has since deteriorated quite a bit more, so we don't feel that could be saved. So, looking at the bids, we should, the city should plan on replacing that as well, which is going to add approximately $6,000 to the bids. We received two. One was from Mission Construction, which the city's familiar with from St. Paul. The other's from Graham Construction in Coffeyville. We've worked with both. The viable option is, you know, replacement this spring, which, when we consider that, Graham is the lowest. His proposal was $77,080.80, but we should add the $6,000 to that. So, his proposal would change to $83,080.80.
This is for half width, it says?
It's, there is a drawing provided in the packet. We just called it half width, but it's basically the area that we agreed to in the negotiations. We also received bids for what we call the full width, which would basically square that replacement up. Those were higher, obviously. And strangely, if we go that route, the bids are flipped. Mission is the lesser amount. Graham is higher. So, it really depends which way the city wants to go. The full amount received, as I recall, was $90,000 from Kansas Fibers. So, you could do the original amount and stay within the dollar amount received, or the, what we're called the half width, and stay within the dollar amount received. If we go to the full width, then it would take some additional city funds.
It feels a little odd to me to repave half the street and have half of it looking kind of rocky. Is that...
It would look, it would be odd. It would be much better to go the full depth, because where we match that joint, it's really, it's going to be somewhat easier to just have the one joint going full way across the street.
So, on your full width, are you removing the brick under it, or are you just milling?
No, it's, this is for full-depth replacement, so it would excavate all the existing pavement, and including the brick, and then bring that back up with granular compacted stone as a base, and then concrete pavement.
How deep are you excavating?
It would be, let me look here, see if I can tell you from 14 inches.
Under this, I'm sorry, go ahead, Leonard.
So, where are you tying into the existing? Are you, did you detail it that the overlay cuts back because you can't? You know, when you have a vertical wall on your excavation, you can't get good compaction right there. So, are you over-excavating or taking the pavement back so you have a span that's undisturbed and new?
Yes, that's exactly how it would have to happen.
And this is all asphalt coming back, right?
The, it's concrete pavement being constructed.
The new surface would be concrete?
The new surface is concrete, yes.
Yeah, so if we didn't do full width, we're going to have
Yes, that joint...
concrete and the other side asphalt.
Correct, correct. That, the area that shaded, if we stuck with the half width, the area shaded would be concrete. The remaining would be an asphalt surface.
It says here on the bid, under one of them, begin February 1st. Obviously, we're not going to hit that, and finish by April 1st.
Correct. The days would remain the same.
60 days?
We would have to push back, yes.
Okay.
And that's plenty of time.
See, Mission, if we went the full width, as you're suggesting, then, it says begin December and complete in 45 days.
Yeah, and that's, time's expired, too, but still the same timeframe. We would move the start date later.
So, Mission's a little...
They're holding, is that...
They're saying they're a little faster. They, Mission tends to do very good work, but they're usually slower than you want them to be.
Wait, Mission is usually slower?
Yeah.
But they're saying 45 days, and Graham is 60.
Correct. Graham, quite honestly, maybe their quality's a little less than Mission, but they're usually on time. So, they're both acceptable. It's just, that's from our experience working with them.
If they add the crosswalk in, though, on the Mission one for the, is it still the $6,000?
Yes, they're roughly the same number.
Be 108, 810.
Correct, and correct. We would increase both bids by 6,000.
Can you refresh my memory on the sidewalk issue regarding our ADA compliance problems in the past? I was thinking if we reservice a road, we have to bring the sidewalks into compliance, slope. Am I confused on that?
Cross slope.
Cross slope on the sidewalks?
The cross slope, you do not. Where, what you have to address is the ramp. You have to make the ramp compliant.
Okay.
So, in this instance, the ramps are heaved anyway. The city had a temporary repair done around the Neowalla time to take out a trip hazard, but we are still going to have to replace both of those ramps that we are, we are, or two of the ramps that we are catching.
And we don't go far enough south that we get into the handicap parking spaces, do we?
Correct, correct. We do not.
So, then we don't have to correct the slope on that?
Correct.
So, if we go the full width replacement, the low bid is 102, and we add 6, so we're at about 108, 8.
Yes.
And we've got a check sitting here for 90, so we've got to come up with $18,000.
$18,810.
Most engineering.
How much is the engineering?
Yeah, the, we think we can do this periodic inspection, and I believe before I used the number of around $5,000 for the commission to do periodic inspection.
Is that design also, or is the design...
Well, design was essentially completed as part of our, part of the arbitration proceedings.
I hate to spend money on anything we don't have to, but I can't see going half width replacement. It seems like a really bad idea to me.
You make that work, Jim.
Particularly with two different materials.
Yeah, exactly.
And what you're going to have with the asphalt that's there with its age. It's already started cracking, and
Right.
you're going to have pieces coming up, and to go back and, we'll always have that problem with the brick under part of it, and asphalt and concrete on the other side, there's...
Yeah.
Full width is going to be a better product in the end.
Jim, you can make that work somehow.
23, 10, yeah.
23,000, right? 14,000? Okay. Well, I agree, full width makes sense. Look, God, let's downtown. We don't want to do that. So, would there be a motion, then, to approve the Mission bid for 108,018?
Yeah.
Do you need to include the 5,000 engineering in that number as well?
Good, good point. Plus 5,000 engineering.
Not to exceed...
Huh? Say again?
Not to exceed 5,000.
Not to exceed, okay. I'd make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, did you get it, Jim?
Yep.
And it's moved to second, then, then that we approved the bid for Mission for the downtown repair. And actually, it's 108,018, and not to exceed 5,000. Inspection fee? All those in favor, then, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, Sean. Thank you, stay there for...
He's got more.
Yep, P, the Clink project?
Yes, to give a little background about how the city's done clinks in the past. This is a cost share with KDOT. And the, in the past, the city's applied for three years of funding, and then combined those normally into one year. That was the intent when the city applied for this, to apply for subsequent clinks and then combine it one or two years away and do that project. The problem is KDOT's changing their program, so there's not going to be a Clink program anymore. So, they've told us, if the city doesn't use this, then you're going to, this grant's going to go away. So, that's an option. You don't have to do the project, it's just you're turning the KDOT grant away. That's why it's kind of popped up that you need to make a decision on this one when we were planning, or intended for the city to do this next year or the year after with some other clinks, but you're not going to have that option. The KDOT's changing their grant programs. They didn't even have applications last year for any clinks or GIs. They're supposed to have a new program set up and applications this year, but it's not going to be the Clink. And it's our understanding, it's nothing you could combine the Clink with. So, this is really a standalone project, and unfortunately, you're going to have to decide if you want to do it.
So, our two options are move forward soon, or give 300,000 back to KDOT?
Correct.
Correct.
So, there, you have some data from KDOT that's a form that you need to complete if you determine you want to proceed. The numbers in it are a little different than the numbers on the screen. We feel that you should plan on a little higher city share than what it says in there, and it's really related to the ADA ramps. We think that's a worst-case cost. We just don't want to come back later and tell you, if you choose to do it, hey, we need to spend another $30,000. So, we've kind of done a worst-case cost estimate. Those are the numbers that we feel are KDOT and city share.
So, the 234,250 is worst case?
Correct.
On KDOT, and I guess two things. The Department of Justice said if we mill an overlay, the curb ramps abutting the roadway, a new work has to be installed. On our intersections, do we do the radius back that we are in contact with the ramps or the sidewalk parallel?
Yes, KDOT wants you to do that, so you do end up picking up a lot of parallel ramps. That's why we kicked in a little more money. A lot of those ramps were done through the block grant process, but not all of them. So, there's some that have been done already, but like I said, there's a number of perpendicular and parallel ramps that need to be done.
And on funding, yesterday, I was talking to Kelly and Jim. On the Treasurers report, it showed 2015, 2016 Clink projects with 267,319. And was, did you find out, is that the leftover money from that bond?
Most of that's from the bond. There's a little bit in there that the city put in for funding. The bond number's actually 203,000. I actually, I think it should have gotten passed around to you. There's three different sheets to give you. I've represented to you the proposed projects sheet that we looked at last year, and this Clink wasn't on it due to the fact that we thought it was still a future project. The thing that I need to point out is that we did decide to move forward with the Peter Pan project... The thing that I need to point out is that we did decide to move forward with the Peter Pan project, but we hadn't really nailed down where that funding comes from, so, um, I wanna have this conversation all at once. The Peter Pan estimate right now is just below seven hundred thousand dollars, in the special use sales tax, which is one of the sheets I've just given to you, I'm estimating that at the end of the ne, of next year, based on a low, low, um, income number, that we have five hundred and twenty-one thousand in streets available after the bond payments. And then we have this bond overage that we were looking at, Commissioner Koflish, I would like to use the special use sales tax and the bond overage to cover Peter Pan, since we're already down that path. Um, on the clink project here that we're looking at, the Economic Development and Transportation Fund has plenty of funds to cover this, and we could take it from there. And I don't think I realized or connected till Sean was talking that the ADA ramp piece of this, if we can isolate that, I would recommend that that comes out of the ADA piece of the special use sales tax. So on this, on this entire project, um, out of the two hundred and thirty-four thousand, it doesn't look like all of that would come out of the economic development, but that we use those ADA funds. That wouldn't be too hard to break out.
No, we can.
See, there's.
Okay.
There's approximately a million in there.
Yeah, I provided you a summary of the Economic Development Fund too, this is a little bit of a complicated conversation, because I know there's several things in the works with, related to economic development, um, there, in the budget, it wasn't necessarily approved, but it was just, I highlighted a hundred dollars, set that aside in case you wanted to do another downtown grant program. Right now, it sounds like the applicants that we have do not use up the entire hundred thousand there, so that's probably not necessary, that's totally your decision. And then I also don't know what's in the works with Standard Motors, I know there's something, but I have no idea what type of a dollar commitment that is. But based on the funding that we expect to receive in and the commitments that we have already on the books, funds available at the end of two thousand seventeen, our balance would be over nine hundred thousand, so we do have the money to move forward with this.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we have to look at all that.
You do, I mean, there's a lot of unknowns as far as economic development.
Yeah, big picture.
Yeah, the, the clink grant, um, KDOT has indicated it, it needs to be bid by June, so you need to decide fairly quickly, if, if not tonight, certainly by the next meeting, you need to know if moving forward.
That goes from, um, Oak to.
Chestnut.
Chestnut, and that's an overlay.
Yeah, it's a mill and overlay.
Mill and overlay.
Curb ramps.
Curb ramps.
Yeah, and I, I don't have the exact number, but maybe half the curb ramps have been done previously through the CDBG program, but.
So it's striking, it's very similar to what we've done in the past.
Correct.
Like there was that East Main project there.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so it's four lane.
Yes.
I mean, it's, there's no change, it's just a mill and over, overlay.
Correct, no, no change in alignment or, or surface other than mill and overlay.
Staff recommends that you authorize us to proceed with it and authorize the mayor to sign any documentation that's required to syndicate out, to let them know that and proceed with the bidding.
Yeah, I, I think if, the way the funding is going with KDOT, and the way our funding is too, if we can get seventy-five percent, and we can do it without a bond or any financing, if we can do it out of the funds we've got, which it looks like, and still do Peter Pan geometric, I think we need to act.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, you don't wanna turn down state money, 'cause it's not there.
If we turn it down, then it can maybe affect us on future.
Right.
Grants, so.
I think definitely, let's move forward.
Yeah, I think we move forward. So then I would, so the motion would look like what, Jen, Jen, to proceed with the clink project for?
Yeah, and you would authorize the mayor to sign the documents, and I think we just need to note that the funding will be between Economic Development Fund and the special use sales tax for ADA.
Okay.
On this project, that was a long motion, do you want me to reword that?
Yeah.
So, the first thing, we've gotta get the agreement to KDOT, just tell them.
So is that, and your question is, is that a separate?
Signing appropriate documents to approve the project.
Right.
Yeah, and do we have an engineering contract on this?
No, not yet.
Is engineering included in that? So is engineering included in that cost?
We do accept gifts too, Sean, we, well, we can't give you a gift, but we could take one from you.
It can't be worth over a hundred.
Sean, is, is the engineering included in that cost?
No, because a gift has no value, a donation has no value, we got that from the Attorney General.
A gift has no value.
Yeah.
Depends on the gift, so, so the engineering is already included in this cost estimate?
It is.
You scared us for a minute there.
Good, okay.
It's broken out in that KDOT plan, if you have it, which is slightly less than my.
So we're looking at the total number there, okay.
Okay, so we need a motion then to proceed, Leonard, you were on that one, so.
And authorize signing any related documentation.
I'll make a motion that we proceed with the clink project from, on Penn Avenue, from Chestnut to Oak, and authorize the mayor to sign all documentation with KDOT to secure the grant.
Proceed with bidding it, I mean, we don't have bids yet, do we?
Well, we have to.
No, it's just to proceed.
It's proceed, and then.
The motion decided to proceed, I mean, that would include the bid process.
Then, then that takes care of the bid process?
Mm-hmm.
See, I was trying to remember what the protocol was.
And sometimes we've come back and had to set a bid date.
Yeah.
Seems like there's another step in there somewhere.
Do we need to set a bid date?
Yeah, what, what you really, only thing that needs to be done today is this programming request from KDOT needs to be executed by the city.
We've already executed that.
Okay.
That's already been done.
Then, uh, yeah, when, when plans are complete, then we'll come back and we'll set a bid.
Set the bid.
Just authorize proceeding and any documentation, that'll get us by, and then we'll come back with the dates that for bids.
Okay.
When it gets all the.
And have his agreement for next meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So what was my motion?
Jen, can you read that back, please, Jen?
I ha, I have a motion to proceed with the clink project on Penn Avenue from Chestnut to Oak, and authorize the mayor to sign any documents to move forward with the clink.
Good.
Good.
I'll second.
All right, been moved and seconded to proceed with the clink project on Penn, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, well, good.
Now, before, before we move on, since we were talking about funding, because those funds that were in a bond were tagged for specific funds, there are steps that we have to take, and we're working with the bond attorney to see that, but I would like to get formal action saying that we'd like to move that direction so we can take it to the bond attorney, so, um, those extra funds on the, um.
So that's the.
Two thousand fifteen A bond, um, I was recommending we use those for Peter Pan, can I get a motion that we take the steps to make those bond funds available for the Peter Pan?
That's the two hundred and three thousand, eight forty-two?
Mm-hmm.
And I talked to Garth today, and what they'll do is they'll add that into our CIP project list that was included with those bonds, um, so they'll just amend that, and that'll come back to you to do that, but that's the process.
Okay.
Would we have to have that as a separate item since it's not relating to keep track of how the motion goes for future reference?
I think she's asking you to do an additional motion.
Yeah, I'm asking for a, a new motion now for the two hundred and three thousand that we, that you authorize city staff to work with the bond attorneys to get those bond funds attributed to the Peter Pan project.
They'll bring, you'll bring the other document.
Because that wasn't part of the bond process when we, when they, when they issued the two thousand fifteen A bonds, so we need to go through the legal steps to do that.
Sounds good.
I'd make a motion that we, um, contact the bond attorney to, um, draw paperwork so that we can utilize the remaining funds in the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen clink projects for Peter Pan geometric.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, Jen, can you, have you got it?
Uh-huh.
I'll read that back.
I have a motion that we contact the bond attorney to draw paperwork to allow us to utilize the remaining funds for the Peter Pan, the remaining bond funds for the Peter Pan geometric project.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, then, that we proceed with the bonds, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're ready to move on then to.
City project.
Uh, city projects.
And we have to have Sean come back.
Good exercise from your chair there, Sean.
There you go, you, you've talked some about the Peter Pan project, um, you know, we go through a step-by-step process with KDOT, where you've moved the plans along, send those in, the cost estimates are still good, the, the plans have been submitted. We've been assisting the city in, um, obtaining right-of-way and with the utility relocations, um, at the, at the next council meeting, or mission meeting, I should probably go into executive session, um, on the right-of-way, there's not any huge issues, but there's a few minor things we just need to discuss with the commission, um, in that, and, uh, I, I would expect that, then, that the, uh, right-of-way acquisition could be completed rather rapidly after that. So everything is, is moving forward well, and we anticipate advertising for bids in April or, or May. And, uh, the only other two current street projects are the Penn Avenue patching, which you discussed tonight, and then you approved the clink, so we'll have you a contract for that one next week. The water, wastewater projects, the Basin Five CDBG projects complete, uh, we're assisting the city in preparing the outlay requests so that the city can be reimbursed, uh, for their portion of the funds through the, through the loan program, the KDHE loan program. Um, I hope to get that, uh, to Jen by Friday, which is tomorrow. The Lakeview Lift Station, that, that is a project that we've completed the plans on, the plans have been approved by KDHE, if you recall, there's not enough money left in the existing loan to construct that project, so the commission needs to decide if we're going to get another loan or shell that project for a while, or, or how you wanna proceed with it. That's a four hundred thousand dollar, uh, project, that lift station has a lot of problems, so you just need to, you need to be cognizant that you need to make a decision sometime moving forward. The ADA, uh, ramp program, the CDBG ramp, uh, project number three is complete, it's being closed out, that, uh, we did receive the letter from, uh, the Department of Justice, so that'll be the last large, large, uh, ramp program that we have to do, or the city has to do.
We're still need to keep up with the program.
Yes, yes, that's, that, you do, and I saw you had an ordinance on, uh, updating your complaint procedures, you certainly need to not ignore those ramps, and we discussed some of that on the clink project, because that, uh, could get the city back in the same, uh, project. And then there, there are a number of ramps left, but as far as applying for a block grant and doing a large parcel of those, I don't think that needs to be done, but I do think there needs to be a smaller program established for the city to complete all those ramps. And, uh, we're, I met, we met with city staff, we're kinda packaging up the remaining things, uh, 'cause we have done plans on what I refer to as the Black Bear Trail and Kitty Land, and on, uh, the parking around the oval that were in that original consent order. Those plans are prepared, but the city, since you received the notice from the DOJ, you're not required to do those immediately, so we need to put those into your transition plan with a cost estimate and a schedule on, on getting those done eventually, somewhere down the road. And we're preparing that schedule, and we'll have that to present to the commission at some, some point, um, soon, hopefully within the next thirty to sixty days. It's really just the finalization of that transition plan of all, all, well, everything remaining on the ADA's.
Okay, questions?
We have more reports.
Yeah, thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
We have more reports, I know.
An update on the, the Betton Water Mine, it is in place, uh, in operation, the only thing we have left to do is a little cleanup work, and, uh, but they're using water off of it now. The filter upgrade and skate upgrade at the water treatment plant is about eighty percent complete, we're anticipating completion of that in the next two weeks. And, uh, just wanted to give you a heads up on our consumption of revenue for two thousand and sixteen, with the water emergency did have an impact on our consumption, so we may be anticipating a little bit of a hit on revenue from that, wanted to give you heads up.
Yeah, we did, we, we did see a small increase in revenue, but the five percent that we budgeted for last year, I mean, obviously, our revenues didn't come in at a ninety thousand dollar increase like we had hoped with that five percent. Um, the other thing I need to bring to your attention is that the sewer rates, your sewer charges that are assessed to you on your water bills are based on your water usage in November, December, January, and February of the current year that you're in. Well, we had a water emergency in November, so all of those sewer usage numbers are gonna go down for next year, so, um, we did great things, we're so glad the city didn't use water, and I promised a couple citizens we won't charge them for the water they didn't use, um, they were relieved to hear that, but, um, there are gonna be some impacts to that that we'll see over the next year. Thankfully, it was a very short emergency, I mean, it could've been longer than it was, but, like, as far as what sewer charges are gonna be, we're gonna see those go down, 'cause our consumption numbers in November are down. So, um, the reason I bring that up to you is because you will get an update here in a little bit on the water rate study, um, city staff's in a tough position, because we see this possible reduction, slight reduction in revenue coming in, we have presented a budget that doesn't quite cover itself, because we are optimistic that rates will get adjusted sometime this year. But without a water rate study, I know, I know you gentlemen are reluctant to do anything, and I understand that, but we're already a month in, we didn't adjust our rates, we have no extra income coming in as we budgeted, and we were already not going to make our budget next year. So, I'm, I'm not, maybe Jeff can update on where we're at with the rate study, but I'm not at a position where I can say, we can't do anything until it's released, if it's gonna be a while, we might have to bring that, that five percent increase back to you, just to get it in place, to get revenue generated, because we knew when we brought that five percent increase budget to you last year, that we ended up in the negative. We do have the water reserve fund we can go into, however, you start dipping into that fund, you're, you're putting yourself in a very bad spot, because that million dollars is for a true emergency, not for something like this.
I don't wanna tap that money, I don't think that's smart.
So I just wanna make you gentlemen aware, the water emergency is having some impact on the future year.
So, where, where are we, Jen, on that?
Well, it kind of affects our discussion on our current litigation, I'd prefer to discuss it under attorney-client privilege in executive session.
Okay. Okay, so, we're in a crunch in the water sewer budget, right, and if, if we don't act soon, the consequence is that we lost a month's revenue, which.
Well, you've, I mean, you've already lost January, but by the time you pass it, it'll be another month before it comes into effect, I mean, you have to publish it and all of that stuff, so, I mean, you'll lose at least two months of increased revenue this year, and, and I, maybe you need to go into executive session, but I, if, if it looks like there's going to be a delay in getting that released, I would ask that we have, be able to bring a water increase to you, to go ahead and start increasing revenues at least a little bit.
The five percent, is that, would that be your recommendation then?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I knew this one wasn't gonna go away. Okay, well, if we can do that, is there other reports then?
Yes, um, I did get an email late last night from Andy Pitts on the update of the trainer study, I emailed it to you before the meeting, but I also made some copies for you. And basically, you need to get, uh, determine how large you want that committee to be, if you want it to be twelve people or fifteen people, and then you need to get your people selected, because he's wanting to start these meetings pretty quickly. So, um, I think the first thing you need to determine is, is what size do you want, do you want twelve or do you want fifteen?
Well, I mean, I, to me, more the merrier, I'd be happy with fifteen, that means each of us present five names, and I, to be honest, I've had more than five people ask me if they can serve on the committee, so, and, uh, I don't really wanna tell any of those folks no, 'cause I think they'll do a nice job. job. My thoughts on... I'm okay with 15.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, how quick...
I mean, that's a start, that's a start, and then they'll get into the community, which will be a lot bigger, hopefully a lot bigger.
Yeah, then they'll have some community ones as well. And how quickly can you provide the names so that we can, because if he's wanting us to set up meetings the 16th, 17th, or 20th, we need to give people time to, you know, schedule, so could you guys get those to us pretty quickly?
I can get them to you tomorrow.
So what is your definition of pretty quickly? Just to make sure we understand.
So I can get them to you tomorrow. I've got them written down.
Okay.
I can get them.
What about Leonard?
Probably Monday or Tuesday. I'd need to call to see if they're still interested and just confirm, so I can do that over the weekend.
Gary?
Yeah, I need to get in touch with everybody too, if asked, so maybe Tuesday.
So you wanna say Tuesday by the end of the day? Is that okay?
I'm good with that. I'm good.
Okay. All righty. Thank you so much. And then we have some miscellaneous reports on downtown trees.
Hello? I'm happy to say we've talked to the nursery up north with the trees, and they have acknowledged to us March 1. So we are planning to be planting trees in March. I don't have a definite day, but that's a good time before it gets hot. Our, our total number of trees is 39, and then we have six bushes, which are the crepe myrtles. So if we can do kind of like we did last year and do a couple workdays, I'm looking at, your staff could do the crepe myrtles, no problem, the bushes, and then try to schedule 20 trees each day, because I think we did 20-some trees.
We did those on a Sunday, didn't we?
We did it on a Sunday. It was kind of nice and convenient because it was no traffic, and it made it go faster. But, yeah, we can get them going.
Did you have some preliminary dates, preliminary Sundays to work?
No, I haven't really set that up yet, but we could work it out. We had good participation. I can get going on that now that we know March 1, and, and set some dates and see how many volunteers I can get, but...
That'd be great. That'd be great.
And then we'll be done.
Then that finishes it all up, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I've had people that said they'd like to volunteer, get in touch with you.
Yeah, get in touch with me. Yeah. I'll be happy to make a list. We have, you know, some volunteer from the city for the equipment and everything. I know Mike will help, and Terry's been real good at helping, and, and actually, this helps Terry's group. He still has to dig some of the tree wells, and so that gives him time to get the tree wells cleaned out before we start in March.
That's great news.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Then we have status of the downtown grant.
April's waiting.
I know everybody's ready to go home, and Jen told me earlier, I had three minutes, so here we go. All right. We have, fortunately, we had nine participants in your first round of your downtown grants. Out of those nine participants, we're anticipating they're going to be investing about $270,000 into the downtown buildings. That means that the city's share will be around $67,000. We have about 138 buildings that are in that area. We have inspected 29 of those buildings already. We have 17 of them scheduled for February and March. That'll give us about 92 to remain to inspect. When we're doing these inspections, the fire department's also going along with us so that the annual fire inspection, we're not bothering the property owners twice, so we're, I don't wanna say killing two birds with one stone, but I guess that's what we're doing. We're taking care of that as well. The interesting thing is, since the grants closed, I have had three additional property owners who have contacted me, and there could potentially be somebody who's interested in purchasing a downtown building that would have an interest in grant funds as well. So it's been well-received. Once again, I will tell you going through, is that a cough because I'm almost there? Just kidding you. People who have visited with me, when we've gone and done the inspections, have been very thankful to the commission, and these participants that have turned in their applications are very, I think will be very pleased. Mainly what the works looking at is window replacements, tuck pointing roof, and foundation stabilization. So, good job commissioners.
April, I'm sorry, you said our share of those would be about 67...
67,000.
Of our 100,000 we budgeted.
Correct.
So we could still fund some more.
Correct.
Like, like the one you just mentioned and...
Well, like I said, we've got three others who contacted me after the deadline date, and I told them, you know, my recommendation to the commission, once we get through this, would be...
See if there's funds.
Ask for a, a second round of applications. Yeah. So, as you know, once you get into something, these are estimates. You don't ever know. We open up a wall, and it might be a little bit more, so, yeah.
Okay. Well, that's exciting, nine.
Yes.
That's good participation.
Yes.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you.
That's all of our reports that we have, unless you guys have other questions of staff.
No, I don't.
I don't.
I don't have any questions. Okay, we have R is next.
Yes.
And that is the city manager search report.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody else has been in touch with Nikki at all, but I, I talked to her today just to see what the status was. She said that she still had a couple people that hadn't filled out the survey yet, but she's giving them through tomorrow, and then the first to next week, they will have the ad put together as a result of those surveys. And she said at that point, they would like commission approval of the ad before they start advertising. And I was thinking, I don't want to wait two weeks to approve this, so perhaps we could come up with a way for maybe one of us and city staff to review it and go ahead and pre-approve it? I mean, it's just what ad we're gonna run. I don't, I really don't want to wait two weeks on that.
No. I contacted her today. I hadn't received the survey.
Darn.
And one of the other names that I gave her hadn't either. She said that...
Had to spam or something?
That wasn't in mine, so I've gotta contact her tomorrow.
Get it sent again.
To get it sent some, some way or...
Yeah. Well, I, I didn't even talk to her today. I talked to her yesterday, late, and I knew she was still waiting on a few to finish the survey. She would, she said there would be, we'd have the op, there's a long ad, kind of a short ad, and then we need to make a determination on which publications to advertise in, and I think we, at the time that we accepted the contract, we agreed that we would hold it open for 30 days for applicants to apply. And then, but, you know, the ad, placing the ad actually starts the process, and then 30 days, we close off receipt of applications or resumes, then we start the due diligence process of reference checking, that type of stuff, okay? So, well, I'm like you, Gary, I wanna move. I wanna get going. What's your pleasure on?
I think just send us all the, the ad, and then the mayor go ahead and approve it, if it looks okay with them.
I'll have some others look at it, and I know you guys can't, but I'll have. Jen, yeah, I mean...
I'd like to see it, I'm sure you've been through it.
Yeah, I mean, you can...
To double check, I'll just go ahead and get it going.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Authorize you to sit down with city staff and make sure you like it.
Then, then what about publications? You know, there's, we wanna certainly do Kansas, we wanna expand our reach, I'm assuming, not just contained within the borders of Kansas, but...
Right.
Within the Midwest region. What's your, what's your thoughts on that? There's all, there's these different publications that reach different areas and...
Well, she said there's a national...
Yeah, that's the one that, I mean, we can do a national ad.
Association of City Managers.
Regional.
Right.
There's, obviously through the league, there, there'd be the state-type thing.
The city managers I've talked to all said we should go, at least put it in that national, that website of that national organization, so at least let's do that.
I talked to that guy with Pittsburgh, and that's what he suggested. Yeah, thank you. Okay, is that good? So consensus is on that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good with that, too. I think it's, I think that's very good. I don't think we want to limit anything we're trying to do here. Yeah. Okay, so...
Do we need to...
Do we need to make a motion then to authorize me to go ahead and get the ad, review it, submit it then for...
I'm okay with it either way. I'm happy to make a motion.
Go ahead and make a motion. You haven't made one tonight.
Yeah, I'm losing my touch. Okay, I, I move that the city commission authorize the mayor and a team of city staff that he selects to review the ad, approve it, and give the, the go-ahead to the league.
Okay. Clean that up for me, Jen, so I know that was second.
I'll second.
Okay, been moved and seconded then to proceed with the ad placement and review, so all those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that's good, so we're ready to move forward, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Gary. Okay, looks like we're gonna have two executive sessions instead of just one. One will be attorney-client privilege. How long do you think we need on that, Jeff? Do that? Five minutes?
You know, we all have on here commission comments, which you took over, and...
Oh, I forgot, yeah.
I, I do. I never get texted during the meetings, ever, but my phone's been beeping the whole meeting, and they're all saying from all over the country, "I just heard about you guys on NPR. All things considered, they did a fabulous story that ran this evening." Seven-minute story on Independence, Kansas, that they said was just charming and wonderful, so we missed it, but we'll have to find that and listen to it.
It's online?
I don't know.
Is it?
It was on NPR tonight.
Well, I looked at it earlier, and it doesn't have the audio up yet, but they do have the link and the page ready, so if you search it, they should have the audio up by now.
So npr.com?
It wasn't mainstream.
I didn't look at my phone. I wonder if that's why my phone's buzzing. That's all I have, right? Okay, Leonard, you got anything?
No.
Okay, I don't have anything either. So now, we already took care of the public concern, now we're ready for executive sessions. We need to go into attorney-client privilege, be Jeff and the commissioners, and should we have Jen go with us, too? Huh? Okay. What? What do you need to go? Somebody's gotta take me.
Yeah.
I think you should. You need to go, too. What's that?
Yeah, because she's, they've been communicating with Mr. Traister.
Right, that's what, that's why, that's what she told me, said, yeah. All right, so I'd make a motion, then we go into executive session for, let's, let's go 10 minutes. Not long, not 10 minutes, five minutes?
No, that's...
10, because I can see we'll have a discussion on it. And for non, for attorney-client privilege...
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we'll be back here in 7:23. Okay, we're back in open session. Now, we wanna go into executive session for non-elected personnel for 15 minutes. In the executive session will be three commissioners and city manager, and that would be a motion that we go into executive...
City attorney?
Uh, no, not right now. He may come in later, but not right now. So that'd be a motion, Jen. 15. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we're, we're back in open session. We're gonna go back into non-elected personnel for, was it 15? 15, 15 minutes, and we'll be back here at 7:55. Commissioners, yes. Okay. We're good?
Let's have the motion.
That's a motion.
Yeah, that's a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're back in open session. Okay, I have a motion here that I'd like to read. Motion states, "I move that an additional duty be assigned to the city manager pursuant to paragraph two of his employment contract with the city, stating that the duty to be assigned to the city manager is that the city manager is directed to take vacation leave effective January 30, 2017, and that vacation leave shall extend through March 31, 2017, the end date of the city manager's contract, and that the city manager be granted such additional paid vacation so that his paid vacation leave is sufficient in duration that he will have paid vacation leave through March 31, 2017." Would there be a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and it's been seconded. Our vote would be, I would vote yes. Aye?